Jason, could you highlight the where we are with our athletic program?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Copeland. First, I want to say thank you to the board and the rest of the district administration for all your support with our fall season. It's been a very successful season for both our students, staff, and our community. The plan that we have recommended to you is in line with our league, Central League Plan, and adapted from there. Our first practice date for our winter season will be start on December 7th. We would be looking at a similar model to what we did in July and August with two to three workouts per week for each of our teams. The only team who would not be participating in their normal environment would be ice hockey with no on-ice practices. However, we will provide facilities for them to do dry land practices. Our first recommended competition date would not be till the week of January 11th. All of our Central League athletic teams would be on a Central League-only schedule for the regular season. All of our other sports teams or most of our club teams would be on their association schedule. And that would be ice hockey if we're able to compete at that at that time. Squash, and then also indoor track is not a Central League sport. The plan that we that we have provided today also has general and then sport-specific guidance. If you want me to go through that, I can go through those individual pieces.
Yes, please. Is that all right, Dr. Gilbert?
So for the the biggest change that we had for the general considerations, and we made this change late in the fall when when some of the numbers started to go up, we started requiring masking for all of our student athletes during the entirety of practice, where our previous plan, there were times where they were able to have their masks off during exertion exercises or while they were able to be more than six feet apart for a significant amount of time. So we've made that change in the fall, and we're going to continue with that change in the winter. The only exception to that during practice would be a socially-distanced water break. One of the other changes that we've made is we've purchased electronic whistles for officials to use so that the officials can keep their mask on during an entire competition and not have to take it down to blow their whistle. We're going to continue with the same recommendations we made for the locker room that we had in the fall. Locker rooms will be open for students who are in school to to drop their athletic equipment in there and then to also go in and change before practice. But students will be required to take all their belongings with them after they change out to practice, and they're not able to store things either in the locker room overnight. For boys and girls basketball, the sport-specific recommendations would be that students and staff are masked during competitions, with the exception of water breaks, so that would mean that we'd be playing basketball with masks on. We would also eliminate any introductions for the competitions, and that decreases the amount of contact that student athletes are having prior to the competition. For cheerleading, student athletes will be masked during all competitions except for a water break. I talked about ice hockey a little bit before. As of right now, our recommendation is to have dry land workouts only. We will continue to reevaluate hockey status on an ongoing basis if any guidance changes. Boys and girls indoor track, our sport-specific recommendations, in the case of inclement weather, whether that is rain, whether that is too cold of a temperature, we would be canceling practices. In a typical year, we would bring those student athletes inside the building to run in the hallways or find another space for them to work out. We are not going to be able to provide that space, given the current conditions. So all practices will be outdoors, and then competitions for for indoor track will be evaluated as indoor/outdoor sites have become available. So we're continuing to look at options for competitions for those two teams. For boys and girls squash, all staff and student athletes will be masked during competitions. And we've already talked with the Kimwood Club about also reducing the number of student athletes that we have in the facility at one time. For wrestling, all staff and student athletes will be masked during competitions, with the exception of socially-distanced water breaks and the individual wrestler that is on the mat. We would also eliminate the pre-competition introductions for wrestling as well. For boys and girls swimming, a lot of the information that I included for swimming has to do with the pool deck and locker rooms. There are also recommendations that have come from the PIA that we will adopt. And basically, we split the pool in half, so lanes one, two, and three would either be the home team or the away team. So half of this facility is for the home team, half of the facility is for the away team. So lanes four, five, and six would be for either, again, the home or the away team. You split it up based on what works in your facility. For the pool deck, students will enter the pool deck through the exterior doors. One of the reasons that we're doing this is that so students are not coming through the locker rooms, which is the the biggest problematic space that we have right now. So we don't want students coming through the locker room. We want them entering through the exterior doors and then coming onto the pool deck. There'll be individual stations for each of the students, both home and away swimmers. They'll have several hooks for their masks, for their towels, and that'll be their individual space for the entire practice or competition. The locker rooms will be able to be used for students to change. Masks will be worn at all times in there, and we measured it out. In each of our locker rooms, we can hold approximately seven student athletes at one time. And there's space for them to do that. We'll have a coach outside monitoring who's going in and who's going out so that we only have seven student athletes in there at one time. Masking for swimming, masks will be worn in the locker room on deck until students reach their individual station and before they're entering the pool. Masks will be put back on once they're able to dry their face, because if you put on the mask while your face is still wet, that actually reduces the efficacy of the mask, so it makes it almost useless if it's wet. All staff out of the pool will be masked at all times, and that includes our lifeguarding staff, our coaches. In the water, students will not be wearing masks. During practices, we'll be able to have two students per lane. You start on opposite ends of the lane, and you swim in a circular motion, so either clockwise or counterclockwise, so that there's not a lot of crossover while you're in the water. Our plan also included the CHOP, the most recent CHOP sport-specific guidance, and that was the the same guidance that we had when we made the change to student athletes who play football being able to be back in school. So that's the most recent guidance that we we have. That has the 9% threshold is the threshold for the positivity rate, or if there's also rapidly accelerating community transmission, that's also part of the threshold. And basically, what that says is under 9% positivity rate, or if we're not rapidly accelerating in the community, that you're able to have all sports practicing. Again, we've made some individual changes for some of our specific sports, but that you're able to do at least workouts. And we're going to continue to evaluate any changes that need to be made for individual teams as time goes on. And then any guidance that changes that that come from CHOP, we will or elsewhere will implement and adjust our plan as needed and then continue to to monitor the conditions to be able to make decisions whether we're able to compete or practice or not.
Thanks, Jason. I think you can see that the staff has really gone into great detail to try and make this a safe and enjoyable experience. And I'll give both Jason and Tom Ferguson, who knows for the hard work that they've put in it. And particularly, we were all pleased when Jason ran across a an official who wouldn't put his mask on, and he was out there and threw him off the property and sent him packing. So, you know, keeping the kid safe is what it's about. With that, any questions?
Thank you for the presentation and and for all of your work. Are there any questions from the board? Sean Mauring, I'm sorry, I saw. Sean, did you have a question?
I did. Yeah, it's I just wanted to, I definitely appreciate all of the the work that the staff have put into, you know, coming up with this plan and and really being diligent about it. But I guess still just a few concerns, just given our conversation with the folks at CHOP last week, where the medical recommendation continues to be not moving forward with sports at this time. And then also just a concern even with the mask-wearing for a sport like basketball. As as Jason shared, you know, once the masks become wet, they're a lot less effective. So, I mean, just the going through the process of playing basketball, you're sweating profusely so that, you know, you'd be constantly changing masks. So it just, again, continues to be a major concern for me, even with the safety precautions.
Carrie, did you want to respond to that? You look like you.
Well, I I think we're under the assumption that we would be monitoring the incidence and positivity and conferring with CHOP prior to restarting any sports. I believe that they're coming out with some updated guidance, hopefully this week. It would seem that with the rapidly rising incidence rate that we're seeing and and potentially in-school-based transmission right now, you would want to limit to, you know, the conditioning and workouts and so forth. So as as Jason said, all I think all of this would be done while monitoring the situation and and conferring with the public health people as to the safety of it. So this is depending on whether it is a stable situation to proceed.
And we're starting, if, I mean, we're contemplating or targeting that second week in January for competition. That could change if 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 the situation warrants it. We we really had pretty good experience with the fall sports. And albeit they're outdoors, I should hasten to add that we're taking some further precautions for our indoor sports and in our in our large gyms. We're looking to put in that bipolar ionization, which we believe will also add an additional layer of of support for our student athletes.
I was going to say, Mr. Mauring.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
For the for also the masks, we've also, our athletic departments have been provided with the surgical masks. So if students' masks do become wet or unusable during competition, our athletic training staff is able to provide them with a mask if it's seeming wet or if it's not going to going to work. So that is part of our plan. You know, if that something like that would happen, you know, during a basketball game or any other sport.
Thank you.
And and my understanding also is that it's the off-field and off-court activities that are also critical in reducing transmission, whether it's locker rooms, car pools, buses, parking lots. That's all been identified as areas where transmission is as likely as on the field or on the court. So that is something we'll have to look at carefully as well.
And the the idea is to to cool down the situation as much as we can over the next couple of weeks so that we can come back and participate.
Okay, thank you. Peter Lee?
Thank you. I was wondering, and I don't know, maybe this is for you, Ms. Quinnon, or you, Mr. Copeland, the 9% positivity rate, what's the the timeframe for the evaluation of that? Like, based on the current trend line, we'll be over 9% possibly next week in Montgomery County. You know, how long do we need to be under 9% before we could consider, you know, competition again? Based on, you know, next week, potentially, we would be above the threshold for competition. How long will we need to be down below that in order to reopen competition? And then what happens if we're sort of like hovering on that 9% line? And we, you know, spike up and spike down and spike up and spike down?
Carrie, I think you can, I mean, I don't know that it it moves quite that way. It tends to move straight up or leveled, or if you want to speak to that.
Well, I I think you'd want to see a deep, you know, a decreasing trend below 9%, because 9% often means like an uncontrollable transmission in the community. And you you certainly would want to see it go below that. And you would want to look at the other factors. Are you seeing the incidence rate go down as well? Because I don't think you can look at the positivity and isolation of the other factors. So you wouldn't want to see this rising. You'd want to see a decrease in the stabilization of the incidence rate. And you'd also want to look at the level of in-school transmission. So you want to be sure that we're at a place where that in-school transmission isn't occurring.
Okay, thank you. One other unrelated question. As far as mask-wearing goes during competitions, will that just be for lower Marion students? Or are we able to mandate that the other team wear masks as well?
So we're able to to mandate and ask a team that we would be going to compete against to wear masks. So far, our Central League partners have been very flexible in if they if you ask them to wear masks, they will wear masks for a certain.
It was a home game, we can we can ask.
Also away now. So Radnor School District, I want to say it was, I want to say two weeks ago, had sent out a message to our league asking, you know, if you're going to be able to play Radnor in XYZ sport, you're going to need to wear a mask. So there were all positive responses to that. So if we ask other teams to do that, they would do that. I will tell you that our league for our indoor sports is considering masking indoors as we've as detailed in our plan. The one, the two sports that you really can't wear a mask, like in competition, would be swimming. Obviously, we're in the water. And then the other one is wrestling while, just while you're out on the mat in your live wrestling match.
Great, thank you.
Lori Ackman?
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize I could unmute myself. Thank you, and thanks to you, Jason, and the Athletics Department. I had a son and a daughter both compete in fall sports, and I felt it was very well-managed and safe, and everyone participated. So thank you. And if conditions allow, I think this is a, you know, a very thoughtful plan. I just had two quick questions. I didn't, I didn't see, or maybe I missed it, what the spectator policy would or would not be with? So I would love to hear that. And also, would we consider potentially using some of these tests, maybe, to help ensure the, you know, sports teams remain healthy?
So I I can talk about the spectators. So the spectator plan that we adopted in the previous plan, which was each student athlete on our team gets two passes, and then we're able to have seniors on the opposing team. We have a lead pass. They would get two passes as well to our indoor sports. However, this would exclude swimming. And the reason that we're not able to have spectators in swimming is because we're going to have to use that gallery space as individual stations for student athletes to have their towel, their mask, their belongings on the deck out there so that we're not because we're not able to use the locker rooms like we previously were able to use them. One of the things we are considering is trying to livestream our swimming events. We have started to livestream volleyball, and we plan to do that for basketball. We're going to try to get it going in swimming for indoor sports as well and wrestling.
And for the second part of the question, I think it will depend on the amount of tests that they're able to procure for us.
But I do, I do think we discussed early on making sure that athletes, student athletes, had the test. But again, we've had conversations, but until they sit down and and sort of draw up the protocols, you know, we'd be guessing.
Okay, thank you.
Shayna Kalish?
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. I don't, I don't particularly have a question. I just wanted to express my concern. I think this plan is really exceptionally well thought out and planned to the best of our ability. But at this point, Dr. Rubin of the CHOP Policy Lab has told us explicitly that sports should not be having contact right now, that everything should be individual, that we're having to close because we're having outbreaks, that we're ramping up to the holidays, and things are getting worse. And I really am prioritizing our ability to keep our students in school. And I'm worried about adding another avenue for exposure to our student population and our staff members. And I I find the idea of doing indoor sports at this point really concerning, frankly.
I think, as I recall, what he was saying is you do your conditioning now and not competition. And and we're hoping that the competition part will be viable when we're looking to do the competition back in or up to second week of January. Did I get that right, Carrie?
I think so, but I also believe they're coming out with more specific guidance this week, too.
Hey, Lucy Klein?
Thank you. I I will start with following up on Mr. Copeland's comment. That was the way I understood it as well, was that workouts now were fine. And at this point, that there shouldn't be competition, hopefully, hoping that in the future that the numbers would be better and that we would be able to. I have a couple of sort of specific questions. One around, does diving fall under swimming, swimming and diving?
Yes, it is swimming and diving.
Okay. And can you speak a little bit to the ice hockey difference in terms of dry land workout only versus being on the ice? Does that partially because we can't control the environment of the ice rinks? Or sort of what's driving that difference?
My understanding is that it was the cold nature and the aerosol nature of moving around the ice. And both CHOP and the county were were really down on the issue of ice hockey. Carrie, Jason, do you remember?
Yeah, so I I explored that a little more, too. And in addition to that, it was the three other factors, the close unavoidable close contact that you have in ice hockey, the heavy breathing that occurs in ice hockey that, you know, kind of aerosolized and the droplets kind of hang in that colder environment. And the inability to mask with some of the traditional masks. And even if some of those half-masks are used, they're not effective for the amount of exertion and the heavy breathing that occurs in ice hockey.
Okay, thank you. Another quick question. This is for high school. Is there any consideration of middle school doing something like the middle schools did this fall, where they just work out and then possibly play each other?
So at this point, across our league, none of our partners in the Central League are going to be competing in interscholastic middle school sports. However, a lot of them are doing an intramural program that we did at our middle schools this fall.
Thank you. And then I'd like to just finish with a comment or a thought around, one of the things that we talked about over the summer and in the fall when we were talking about sports was the equity issue. And with without having high school sports that, you know, some students might be able to afford to turn to private travel leagues. And but for some other students, this might be their only opportunity to play. And I just wanted to bring that up again because I think that that's an important piece. And I also am more comfortable with the idea of the high schools with the school-based athletics being much more highly regulated than some of the travel teams, where there isn't sort of a governing body that says you must follow these rules. And I think that that's a very big difference between school sports and travel sports, especially if we are, if we sort of mandate and and make sure that our students are masked during workouts and during competitions and things like that, where there's no one governing that in the in the travel team sport. And I, so I do think that the environment is slightly different, although I do understand the concerns about indoor sports, certainly. But I I just wanted to make that.
Sure, and both both the the health professionals at CHOP and Montgomery expressed similar concern about trouble.
Which would, you may should be asking our families to be responsible about that. Ms. Finger? Is she muted? I don't see her at all.
So I thought I had clicked on mute, but I clicked lower hand instead, so.
Okay.
One for two. I have two questions. One is about the the team compact that could potentially be compact within team groups, teams or groups. Is this something that is done that students and their families are signing? That's my one question. You know, I know when my son played lacrosse, there was nothing that was going to stand in the way of him getting to a competition, not even prom. He was up and back in the, back at our house by 8:30 in the morning when they made the playoffs. So I'm just curious how, you know, if, what kinds of conversations are happening between the coaches and the students around their outside-of-school behavior? And then my second question is, with CHOP Policy coming up with new guidelines or some this week or a different recommendation this week, at what point would we potentially listen to their guidelines the way we're listening to them for the school portion of the program?
We think we are listening at this point. And I think as the guidelines change, we try to adapt to the guidelines. If you'll remember in the fall when we departed from the guidelines and and I asked football because of the of the strict guideline, because if we were going to play and if we were going to deviate, then the players would stay in the load. And then the the guidelines changed significantly, and so we allowed the football players to come into school. So we are. So we are cognizant of the guidelines. If something occurs this week that deviates, this policy allows me to make some changes before I come back to you, the board.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, I can speak to the compacts and the conversations that are happening with our coaches. So, all of our coaches, we provided a resource, actually, through the CHOP Policy Center, that just really highlights good behaviors for student athletes on our teams, positive behaviors for them to take if they're going to be part of a team. We did have teams, some of our teams signed that, our student athletes. They also took that home as well. And then, more importantly, I think the conversations that our coaches are having almost on a daily basis about positive behaviors, about mask-wearing, about social distancing, about what they're doing for social events, or if social events are coming up. They're really being proactive and having those conversations on an almost daily basis at this point, or as things come up, so that student athletes are hearing that from their coaches and also their teammates, I would say. That's also been a big part of those conversations.
Thank you.
I just, I'll go last here. I just have to say that while I really do appreciate all of the work that you've done, Jason, and that everybody's doing, the coaches, and I just, Carrie, I I'm really concerned about that 9% positivity rate. I mean, that increased dramatically in terms of the CHOP Policy guidelines. And I think that if our, if we were at 9%, if we were at 8% positivity rate, we would be talking about shutting down school, I think. So it's just really confusing to me, frankly. And it's very confusing to me, and I don't know much, you know, I'm not a big sports person, but I'm really having trouble imagining wrestling without some type of testing, and I'm sure you could say the same thing about other things, but I don't know. But I will just focus on that 9% positivity rate and that change in the CHOP Policy guidelines.
Yeah, I don't think that 9% was meant as a standalone. I think it was or, and/or a rising incidence rate, too. So I think that all of these factors have to be considered. And hopefully, we'll see that stabilization over the next couple of weeks. You know, I don't, I don't know what will happen, but I think we'll have to continually monitor it and be prepared to make adjustments depending on what we're seeing.
And I think we've got to really hope that the community takes the surge seriously, thinks about Thanksgiving, thinks about family gatherings, significant family gatherings inside. We did have some, it wasn't all Halloween, but there were some issues there. And we, the weather's too cold for that to repeat itself. That's what I'm getting from the health professional.
And could I speak to wrestling specifically? So, for wrestling specifically, you know, I do believe that it can be done safely. There has been more club wrestling happening in the last six months than maybe ever before, because it's not regulated and it's outside of the, outside of the school system. For wrestling, you know, on our teams at Harrington and Lower Marion, typically, we have about 15 to 20 student athletes. As a wrestler, you typically train with two to three people, and those are the same two to three people throughout your entire season. So I think we can really portion off our wrestling rooms so that you have limited contact. I also believe that when you're in a wrestling match, you're exposed to one other person on that mat, and you're about 20 to 25 feet from anyone else in the, you know, in the gym, except for the official. But you are, you do have a lot more limited contact in wrestling when you're talking about the number of contacts that you have over even some of our other sports.
Okay, well, thank you for explaining that to me. That's helpful.
So the administration recommends that the Board of School Directors approves the amended LMSD PIAA Athletic Health and Safety Plan as attached and authorizes the superintendent or designate to submit it if necessary to the Pennsylvania Department of Education in a form and manner prescribed by the Pennsylvania Department of Education.
And we had our discussion earlier in order to ensure that some of our folks were able to get home at a reasonable time after long days. But are there any other questions at this time? Is there a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. LaPera, can you please do a roll call vote? I think we're gonna need it on this one.
Yes, I already had it prepared. And can I just please ask who seconded that motion, because it didn't come up for me?
I did. Deborah.
Thank you, Deborah.
Okay.
Ms. Finger, you're first, Ms. Finger.
No.
You seconded it, and then you voted no?
Oh, don't we have to have the motion?
Yes.
Okay, all right, sorry. I just got confused. Okay, that's, that's fine.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Kalish?
No.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Mauring?
No.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
No.
Ms. Ackman?
Yes.
And Dr. Gilbert?
No.
That is four in favor and five against. The motion does not pass.